Thank you.
Are you up so that you can put this thing on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. You practice once.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. This chair. This for this year's. Sorry, we all set?
Yep.
We all want some to show us their face, huh? Calling to order the, um, Board of Select.
Yes.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, it said it. The top.
Sure.
Says recording.
Did we do the room?
It's fine, I'll start again.
Thank you.
Calling to order the Board of Selectman regular meeting of July twenty first, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. We're in person and virtual on Zoom. So the first thing I'd like is to join you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, through liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here are my motions to approve the minutes of July seventh.
I think a motion to approve the minutes of July seventh.
I second that. Is there any discussion? I did too, I, I, I read them a while back.
Thank you.
They look good to me. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Present to speak, public participation is encouraged, speakers are limited by appropriateness, staying on topic and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress, please request to, to reserve time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Hi Christina, you're the only one with your hand raised, you get to go first.
Oh, great. Um. Uh, I just, I'm just, uh, here because I read the minutes from the, the June twenty fifth meeting. And, um, with, I guess, a little disappointment, um, and this is just my first opportunity to share my thoughts. First, the explanation about why the majority of the Board of Finance voted the way they did to move it forward was not included in the, in the minutes or in the comments about the meeting. Instead, it said there was some discussion by Stephanie Summers and Christina Milos on a discrepancy in the amount of the current budget and the second failed budget. And that's not quite what was said, and I don't want to think that you left our, our comments out on purpose, um, but I, the reason why, why I was there and I, what I, I assume why Stephanie was there too was to try to um, get some more information out about, um, what people's, uh, what the thinking was and what, um, information we had at the time. And, um, so it was, it was left out and that's, that's not a big deal, but the big deal part is that, um, Selectman Clark's comments were included. And not only did he say some things that were inaccurate, um, which one of the things he said was that the Republicans on the Board of Finance made motions to increase the Board of Ed budget by one percent, one point five and one point seven. There weren't, weren't any motions like that ever made or voted on. It was discussed and thrown out, but we, we didn't vote on it. Um, and the motions were never made, so, so there's that, but, um, also, he stated, um, that he was gonna, uh, vote no on the budget moving forward because he didn't agree with the budget. And that's, I guess, where I, I have the biggest issue. Because, um, I know after being on the Board of Selectmen for eight years and having petitions come our way or having, um, other boards request that town meetings get called. It's really, it's the role of the selectman to facilitate the town meeting. It isn't, uh, it, it's fine for a member to have opinions about the topic and, and we expect everyone to have opinions about it. But there are opportunities to, to have your opinion, uh, be stated, um, at many times along the process. Um, the time to try to stop something at the, at the eleventh hour just because you don't like it is, isn't, it's, you, there's a test for what, what kind of town meeting topic can be discussed and, um, you know, it, it's, is it a frivolous topic? Is it, uh, legal? Is it, um, is there some other alternate resolution? There's a, there's a whole list of things, but if the Board of Finance, which is the, um, you know, the main financial authority in town, if, if they have voted to move something forward and, and they did, and there was a majority of members of the Board of Finance that voted to move it forward, um, there's really no reason to say no, um, to moving it forward, which is all that you're voting on at that moment, so, um, I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Here, anybody else? Seeing no hands raised. We will move on to correspondence. We have none. Public Works report. Public Works is continuing on the roadside mowing efforts, uh, where they're working on talking to, uh, residents about their robbery that, uh, may be impeding vision, uh, sightlines at intersections. To see if we can, uh, get some permission to, to, uh, improve those. They're cleaning off catch basin lids, which is a good thing because of storms like last night. And, uh, there were some, I, there were some previous washouts, I don't know if yesterday's created any, I didn't have any on my road, so that's what I was concerned about. Uh, they've been chipping brush from the storms. Uh, they prepped the roads for chip seal, I guess they were down by your house.
Yeah, they did over drove them.
Excellent. They're using the higher grade rubberized so that it doesn't stick to your car as much. And then it lasts longer because we are using our asphalt dollars to the best of our ability. They regraded some roads, I know they regraded the end of mine, it's nice. They've been working on vehicle maintenance and patching, uh, holes. They cleared the cross-country path, the Hall Memorial School, and replaced some road signs. I asked them to, we were one, so I'm gonna check that on my way home. I was unable to get out today and look, but I believe that today was the day they're supposed to start replacing the ditch. Putting the windows back in at the, uh, old town hall. So, I had a lot of other things on my mind, so I didn't go over there and look. And for that, I apologize. That's Public Works, uh, tax refunds, none? We don't have any further. I think they'll be coming once we start getting, uh, taxes out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Ashley's working pretty hard on that. Oh, so that's the first thing on my, first Selectman's report is that they are working on that. She should have bills out relatively soon, we should have them by the first of August. Townspeople are reminded that they have until the end of August to get their taxes paid instead of the end of July because timing. We received a, an email, I believe that, uh, did you get this from? Apparently not. Only I did. I will forward this to the rest of the board. Phil Stevens is having a meeting with the Board of Ed concerning, uh, the new building committee, I will be getting in touch with him. To make sure that, because I believe it's the Board of Selectmen that appoint the members of that committee.
Yes.
Uh, but there are a number of interested parties in town that all need to be brought together. Most specifically, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and, uh, the Board of Ed. So, I will be working with Phil to, to be get, get, getting that together.
Those are pointed by, so this is under correspondence, right?
No, this is under Selectman's report, we have no correspondence.
Okay.
So, um, but I, I'm using the correspondence from Phil to, to what, where we're going. Okay. Any other questions on that, or?
No, I mean, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be reviewing the applications and letters of interest.
Yes, we will be doing all kinds of stuff like this. We are in the early, early, early stages of this.
Right.
We just need to make sure that we're getting off on the.
Would it be branch first for us to get from the state of Connecticut or from our lawyer? The, um, qualifications and regulations regarding how and who, um.
I believe that we have that someplace here in the building because we just went through it. And I don't think that, that they've changed in the last two years.
Where would I go to find that?
Uh, well, I am gonna be looking for it and as soon as I gather it, I will give it to you.
How's that?
That's great, thank you.
How you doing?
Good. All right. So, we, I've been working with the towns of Stafford and Holland concerning, uh, the Shared Animal Control Officer Regional Performance Incentive Program, our, our PIP. Uh, if we regionalize our, the, the state and, and cog would very much like us to regionalize animal control. And because of the frequency which animal control is called, it can be a whole bunch over three weeks and then we don't see them again for a month and a half. It's hard to staff consistently throughout. And so they have realized that a hundred and sixty-nine separate, uh, ACO command structures in the state is probably not the most efficient way to go about this. So I've been working with them on this RPI grant. Uh, if you do this, the state is incentivizing us by paying seventy-five percent of all labor costs the first year for the, uh, ACO man structure. And then fifty percent the next year and twenty-five percent the year after that, the towns would pick up the rest of it. Uh, currently, uh, we are getting our services from Stafford. And, uh, this way we don't have to build the same number of animal control facilities. I, Ashford's been invited in, they, they're not participating at this point in time, so I don't know what they're gonna do. But, uh, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, Stafford, not Stafford, Town has just received a rather sizable Steve Grant to re.
Yeah.
We were doing it, and yeah, it was, it was approved like two weeks ago. So they'll be re, redoing their entire animal control facilities, bringing it up to the standards of uh, the Department of Agriculture. And, uh, hopefully, if this works out, we don't have to rebuild ours. And, uh, we could save ourselves.
They built a lot more capacity.
Yes. Because we started this early.
Right.
And I asked.
Right.
Uh.
So you have, you have foresight.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that.
Okay. So how, how would that work moving forward, Pete? So they're, they're the ones that got, that built us on a Steve, Steve Grant.
Mm-hmm.
We would have to reimburse, what, are we playing the Roman board here, or, or how does that work?
Uh, I think we pay a flat fee for Roman board. Um, and cheers. It, I, that, these are some of the details that we're still working out.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we, we meet every other Thursday or something like that. Try to figure it out. Uh, we're, it, it will also save us, uh, on vehicles, cause not everybody else has their own vehicles, we can have two vehicles instead of five. And, uh, for radio dispatch, we gave one radio dispatch instead of three.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and it cost, I believe it's ten thousand dollars a year, we can probably do something, I, I'm supposed to be talking to T N about that in a second. We'll see how that goes. That brings us down to old business. Thank, thankfully, the town has been relatively quiet since the last rep. No, I, I think this is stuff that I left in file from the final report.
The crowd stuff.
The crowd stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we will go down to old business and debt policy.
Some lawyers got back to me with, um, with markup of the debt policy, they've been doing two changes. Um, this will be the third or fourth time we've, we've discussed this in, in, in Board of Selectmen. Just wanting to reiterate that the purpose here is to establish parameters for issuing and managing debt. Wide guidance decision makers related to debt affordability standards. More objectivity in the decision-making process. And facilitate actual financing processes by establishing policy decisions in advance. Um, in the second part of it there, they talk about, or it talks about the, um, the definition of, of, of what capital expenditure is here under the debt policy. Um, town may issue debt for purposes of financing, refinancing, construction, or acquisition, non-recurring permanent capital improvements, major renovations, open state property, or other similar projects that town deems necessary. Qualified for long-term financing of project. It has defined revision, the useful life of five years, it costs at least twenty thousand dollars, there's some more verbiage here, just giving a summary. Um, you know, uh, um, but then then we go into what, what, um, capital expenditures. You know, below, below that, that level, um, or the bond thresholds, uh, don't, don't qualify. Um, and they'll be, they'll be done by federal grants or LUCIT or something like that. Then any amendments to the policy require approval of both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Fundaments. Uh, it's called that, it's called the typo there, I think I did that, okay, there's two that, but on, on three A. Um, so this is a thirty, uh, thirty years is the, is the term up to include. Then it says.
We're at the top of page two right now.
Yeah. So, under three B debt limits, public policies. So type of debt that may be issued, uh, for the purpose of debt proceeds. And what they're, what they're used, there's notes, there's, um, two different kinds of notes having to do with buildings and then bonds and refunding bucks. And it also covers municipal leases, uh, and the parameters for municipal leases are, I think it was five years, no, seven years. Terminal municipal lease shall not exceed seven years, the minimum amount for municipal lease should be twenty-five thousand. Um, and skip over some portions here that are, that are, um, you know, we read them along, but I just wanted to go through the highlights here. Um, Board Finance is responsible for doing analytical review on an annual basis, this is C three, H three, C three. H three, C three. Um, and talks about analytical review, but done, done by the Board of Finance, um, and then there's some ratios here. The ratio of bonded debt to other outstanding debt to net asset value to grand list, recommend the ratio is below three percent. And rating agencies tend to consider this ratio as the most important criteria. And the debt as a percentage of the budget, the ranking of ratio is below ten percent. Um, and then we talk about, um, the, uh, business manager in four, business manager um, would be, um, looking at, um, a reference group and comparing and providing that to the Board of Finance for their annual review. Uh, then we go to debt structuring practices, um, under four. You know, useful life, uh, and the amount, qualified for long-term financing, the project shall have a minimum useful life of five years of twenty thousand dollars. Um, or add get of related items, and then a minimum amount for municipal, uh, leash of twenty-five thousand. And they have maximum term, I think that was, remember exactly, it was thirty years, it's seven years, the leases. Um, and that, that's about the size, but you know, at the, at the very end, there's a little, um, a little bit about the approval process. So authorized by town meeting, town recommendation to Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Then the exceptions or deviations, uh, would be approved by, um, the business manager, the treasurer for selecting the Board of Finance. The major things that were changed since the last, I think, were the timing, uh, a few of the timing issues were changed, and a few of the dollar mark issues were changed. And those can reflect on, you know, what, what most of these things have according to our lawyers, so. But, um, I think the next step would be, um, we should, we should make a motion to, to adopt this. And, um.
Or to Board Finance.
Or is the Board of Finance, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so do you have a motion?
Yeah, I do, so, um, the motion would be the Board of Selectmen, I'm, I'll make a motion to the Board of Selectmen to adopt the debt, debt management policy which establishes parameters for issuing and managing debt. Provides guidance to decision makers, promotes objectivity in debt approval and decision making, and facilitates financing by establishing debt management processes and policies. I have a copy of this for you.
Okay. Wait, you're second?
I'm just, the motion is that we're adopting it or we are adopting it and sending to the Board of Finance.
Correct, because it needs to be approved by both.
It needs to be approved by both.
Yes.
Okay, so. All right. Yes, I'll, I'll second that.
All right, so under, uh, discussion. The thing I'd like to say is I've read this whole thing and, uh, the one thing that I, 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 I thought was, uh, a very useful line item was, uh, debt issuance practices, part F, the use of the credit rating. The town shall continually strive to maintain its bond rating by improving financial policies, budgets, the financial health of the town. So its borrowing costs are minimized to access and its access to credit is preserved.
Yeah.
The town shall maintain good communication with bond names, these about its financial condition, coordinate meetings and presentations in conjunction for new issuance as necessary. I like that line there particularly. The other thing that I got as a general overall feeling, I, I don't know, that's not the word, word I want.
Hmm.
Uh, structure of this whole policy is that I'd say ninety-eight percent of all of this is already in effect in the town.
That was gonna be my question as well.
It's, it, it's from the Board, from being on the Board of Finance, every single one of these things is already being.
It's already best practice, right?
It's already best practice. I think that, uh, the reason I'm supporting it is because number one, it codifies it.
Hmm.
Number two, it, um, gives you a checklist to make sure you haven't missed something.
Mm-hmm.
When you're, when you're going to debt, and number three is that, uh, I had a number three. Oh, it, it's something that has been recommended to the town by our auditors every year since I can remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, they have, they have come in every year during the audit and say, we recommend that you have a, a, uh, debt management policy. And I'd like to point out to those that may be concerned, it's a policy, it's not a ordinance. So that this is to make, to keep you on the right track. But should you decide to slide off the tracks?
You can.
You can. It wouldn't be recommended. That's what's going on there.
And we had our auditor in here.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
We had the auditor in here to talk about that.
Some of the reports might be new, is that, am I reading that correctly?
I think the most of the reports in here are already.
Are they already done?
Yes.
They're already done, I wonder if they have the same language and sort of focus, that might be a new part to.
I, I don't, I don't.
Maybe not.
I didn't get that feeling.
Go ahead.
Most of these reports seem like reports that I've already seen.
Okay, very good, I just probably haven't seen them.
Yeah. Um. So. Let me read this real quick, make sure I'm, I'm. All right, so the, all we're doing is adopting it on this first motion.
We're adopting on this one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You wanna read your second motion?
Recommending forward the, the Board, the Board of Selectmen approved debt management policy to the Board of Finance.
Second, second, can I, uh, make a friendly amendment that we, uh, fix the typo first?
I, yeah, I apologize, um, so, yeah, I was highlighting, I think I dragged it along.
Yes.
Or something, so.
All right. So as soon as we get that.
Yep.
All set up and, and we, we will send it to them. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can you hand that down to Shannon for me?
Who's second in that motion?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
The Assistant Tax Collector Hiring Committee change, uh, last meeting, I believe, that I asked Andy to do it and, uh, after some discussion, Matt would like to be on that committee and I, so I think what we're gonna do is put Matt on that committee with Nicole and, uh, Ashley.
Thank you.
And, uh, you're being now in reserve for the Assistant, Assistant.
Director.
Rec director. Director, and we are working up, uh, the paperwork on that now. Um, Rachel came to me today and said that she would like to see a small change there because we have them working the same number of hours every week regardless of work flow. And there's times when they're particularly busy and times when they're not. So I think we can budget it so that they they work the same number of hours, it's just that we are freer to work with their schedule to make sure they're here when we need them. Uh, we're, we're looking into that, we're discussing it with uh, Stacy Dunn in Personnel. Last thing, and I'm sorry that I forgot this. Uh, under Per Selectman's Status Report, uh, the three towns uh, are of Willington, Mansfield, and Ashford. And I believe there may be additional towns, uh, coming in. We'll be, uh, observing Veterans Day in Mansfield this year with special, uh, focus on, I believe, our Vietnam vets.
Uh, is it the goal? No, that was.
No, that's the next one, that's twenty-seven. So this is the Vietnam Vet, so if you know a Vietnam Vet that lives in Willington, please, uh, forward that information to my office so that we can get it to the Veterans Committee and, uh, they're each, uh, presented with a, a special pin from the town and we are researching financing on that now, which shouldn't be an extraordinary cost. And I think that's what we have, anything for good and welfare?
Have a nice summer, it's wonderful, I'm good and I'm welfare, so.
Yeah. Yeah. How about yourself? I I don't think I have anything in particular. I spent the weekend with my brother and that was fun. More particularly, my nephew, which is more fun. Is there anybody for present to speak? Jim?
Hi guys, Jim Marshall, Fisher Hill Road. Um, two things uh kind of related, but. I was hoping it'd come up, it would come up in your communications or other outreach, but the C I P committee has been trying to work towards getting some joint meetings together. Alongside or kind of uh. Alongside the new request by the Board of Ed uh specific to the school building project, but looking to work towards um. Group meetings to try to envision. Ways in which we can start to brainstorm and come up with a more comprehensive approach to capital planning and financial planning in the town. Uh given the difficulties we had this year. I still think it is, or the committee still believes it's a priority because things like this uh debt management policy. Um in isolation uh aren't really worth much if we don't have a comprehensive plan in place to um. Think about everything cohesively. For example, if you limit debt, but then also don't want to save, you're going nowhere fast. So I do hope that we can coordinate that through the Board of Selectmen uh alongside the Board of Finance. And the Board of Selectmen to get some joint meetings in place so that we can start to envision what. Actual responsible fiscal planning starts to look like here, given the needs that we face as a community. Um the second. And like I said, relatedly, um the debt service policy while in, while I personally believe in and. Pretext is a great idea, but in isolation, it's it's almost as useless as the piece of paper it's printed on. Um. I'm personally a little floored that this whole thing was developed without any back and forth with the Board of Finance as the. Body that I know you sent it to them now, but the fact that um by my understanding, nobody's seen it. Um nor did they have any input in the direction or stipulations within it. Um I think is remarkably problematic. Um I think certain limitations in there would allow us to not do. Any project in town, um given the level of debt that we already have. And aside from that, um while yes, most of this, as Peter said it, most of this is already. Standard practice and good standard practice. There's language in there now that would make it required practice. Um that last line, I believe. Uh specifically. Although it scrolled through the screen as a highlight, because nobody's seen it, saying that any deviations from the debt. Service policy will need to be approved by everybody under the sun in town. That means we can't do anything. In town. We can't plan anything in town without. Full approvals by everybody.
Know what they're what we're doing.
And I I believe that's already the case. Um people are doing that already. So while I think it's a noble effort. Um I think there's a lot more thought that needs to get into it. We have a tendency to rush into policies that are half-formed. Without understanding what the full repercussions and consequences are. I think it involves a much more in-depth look than what's been done to date. Um I definitely think it needs some outreach with uh Board of Finance or somebody other than just Selecton Clark who. You know, his ideas may be noble in in nature, but um we need. More eyes on this. Uh so I hope we can. Kind of advance this in a more comprehensive fashion moving forward, gentlemen, because um. Yeah, in and of itself, I think it's it's not gonna go anywhere good. So, thank you.
Stephanie?
Uh yes, Steph Summers, Y Road. Um. A couple of things, I agree with what Jim was just saying. Um it's been a rigorous, complicated. Budget season, and I can tell you that the Board of Finance has done. Uh no discussion about this at all so far, and it feels like it's pretty far along. I also um have experience with uh talking to the auditors. Uh about the our practices in the past and. And how to arrive at that and the basic ten percent figure that most people have in their minds. And uh what the response I got when I asked our our person who's from the firm uh Mike. Uh that that is something that's not hard and fast, that it's something that. Uh you know, uh as long as it's something that's being addressed in the doing. There are some bonding years that are higher than others. It's not in any way meant to be. A, you know, across the board, you cannot go above this number. Um that, so I'm I'm troubled by the way that's stated. I'm troubled that there aren't any specific figures. About, you know, in today's dollars about what that would really mean. There's no. Uh there's no sheet that from the Board of Finance or somewhere else that sort of shows the practicality of it. I think the timing of it is really suspect, given this uh two-year opportunity we have. To do something significant with a longstanding problem with our schools. So I am troubled by the way this is rolling out. I think if you're doing a vote to institute a policy or forward it. You should at least say on your agenda, vote on the debt policy, that that's your intention. Rather than just debt policy, old business. That's very vague. So I'm I'm concerned about all that. I. Agree with Christina's comments at the outset of the meeting. And I wanted to clarify too that Mike in the, from the minutes that. My comments were specifically to correct that Selectman Clark articulated the tax increase. Percentage for the third referendum as three point five, which was the second referendum figure. And it was two point four. And the problem with. That mistake on that night was it was the night before the referendum itself, I believe. So the third referendum. So it was problematic to have misinformation. Put out in that meeting and uncorrectable, except um except with, you know, uh you're allowing me to to mention that. So that's what my concern was with that. Um and. I think there is one uh. Uh, well, I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make one second. All those in favor?
Aye.